Okay, we'll be back in session. We're returning from closed session with no reportable actions. Roll call?
Councilwoman Parlet.
Here.
Councilmember Spur.
Present.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
And Mayor Matina.
Here.
Pledge allegiance. Here we are, you want to lead us today? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Linda.
John.
Okay, let's see, tonight, we have an urgency item to consider adding to the agenda. This item is to consider ratification of the city manager's declaration of an emergency under Lakeport Municipal Code Section 2.28.130 in connection with the recent atmospheric rivers and flooding. So good. In order to consider this matter, the council must determine by a two-thirds vote that both the following requirements exist. The need exists to take action immediately, and the need for action came to the attention of the agency after the agenda was posted. The need for the city council to ratify the city manager's emergency declaration was not known to staff until today. However, the council must ratify the declaration within seven days of when the city manager made this declaration. Because today is the seventh day from when the city manager made the declaration on the fourteenth, there is a need to take action immediately. So I therefore invite questions from the council before opening this to the public. Any questions?
So the declaration was on the fourteenth, a week ago?
Correct. Any other questions? Anyone from the public? Okay, if not, I'd invite a motion to add as item for the approval of a resolution declaring a local emergency and ratifying the city manager's declaration related to the recent flooding and storm damage.
I think that should be six B.
Okay. So moved?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. All right, so now we can do it, accept the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I'm moved to accept the agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tonight, on our consent agenda, we have the ordinances, minutes, warrants for February 13th, an application, 2017-009, with staff recommendations for the Mardi Gras carnival parade, authorize the acceptance of the sledge removal project and to record a notice of completion with the county of Lake, authorize the out-of-state travel for two Public Works Department employees to attend the ConExpo-ConAg exposition in Locktavious, Nevada on March 9th and 10th, 2017.
So, Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item D. The approve the Mardi Gras carnival.
Okay. Any other changes?
With that, I would make a motion to accept the consent agenda A through C and E and F.
So before we take a second, anyone from the public? Here we have a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second for the consent agenda without item D. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So, do we take up item D now?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
So I guess the reason that we're pulling it is because the Mardi Gras parade is from Library Park, which is closed and will be for quite some time, so.
Yeah, and the applicant has agreed to meet in the city parking lot. It was actually just going to be a staging area for the Mardi Gras parade, and they've agreed to start at the parking lot instead of the Library Park, because of course the flooded park. So I just, we just wanted to make, let you know for the record that was, had been changed, and they've accepted that.
Okay, any questions?
Saturday.
Yeah.
That's why they don't have time for you to bring down.
We expect the park to still be closed.
So are we going to be closing off that parking lot?
Well, at this time, we don't think so. It's pretty high.
Yeah, no, I mean, for them to assemble. For them to assemble, are we closing off the parking lot?
I don't think we're going to need to do that.
Usually, very light parking in there on a Saturday.
On a Saturday, it's really nothing, and, you know. But if council feels that they would be more comfortable with us doing that, I can have staff come in and barricade that off, wouldn't be a big deal.
I think he's asking if it's going to be flooded. Is that what you're saying?
No, he was asking if they were going to close that parking lot.
Oh, so it was just for them to use? Okay.
Half of the parking for...
That's a good question.
Park place is now underwater. And barricade off. So that's eliminated parking for them. But there is all parking along the, along the park line there.
If I understand what they were asking for, it's just going to be like a 15-minute assembly, then they're all trooping up and down the sidewalks to Sober East. So we were kind of looking at these with such a short duration that with all the people staying there, hopefully motorists would be smart enough to know, don't pull in there.
Maybe what we could do is, we could talk to them and ask them if it's going to be a bigger event where it's going to take them a while, and if we need to, with your permission, if we need to close the parking lot off, depending on what their actual plan is, that we could do that. If council gives us permission to do so after speaking with them about what their, what their event really entails. So this was just kind of quick this afternoon that we changed that from the, from Library Park. So I need to get a little bit more information from them too on how long, what, you know, what they expect to be doing. So maybe we could ask council to allow us to close it if it becomes necessary with the, with the event.
Or also, maybe we could put in there the option that we have this alleyway here, which is really easy to close off. If park place is going to be having customers using our parking lot.
That's true too.
And that's going to be a conflict. We could always shut it off, the alleyway here off at both ends. They can stage in there.
That's a better idea. If they have 50 people coming, they'll have to park somewhere too.
Right, so, so if that's okay, we'll pursue that.
Any other questions?
So that would be commensurately to saying we approve it with staff recommendations, which is to close down the alleyway.
Yeah, maybe we could leave it kind of open, the alley or the parking lot, depending. I'd just like to kind of know a little bit more about what their event entails. If we have, if you could give us a couple of options to work with them.
According to their application, it's only going to be from 5:00 to 5:30.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be much.
So it's basically, everybody's just going to meet there.
Right.
And I was at the theater last night, and they were talking about it, and they're just basically going to meet there and kind of parade down to the theater and then have...
I don't think it's that big of a move either, so. But I'd like to get a little more detail from them what they're really going to be doing. Now that we've moved that spot.
If it's pouring down rain, nobody may show up at all.
Yeah, if you allow staff to work with them and figure out which ends up being the best, I would appreciate that, to give us a little bit of leeway on that.
But I do like the parking, I mean, alleyway, because that does have a parking lot for the restaurant at 5:00.
Yeah.
As long as the park street's not closed with more water. People are going to be coming through here and...
So would that fall under staff recommendations?
I could suggest a motion that you approve application 2017-009, the recommended change from Library Park to an alternate location for parade assembly.
Yeah, leave it open too.
Just leave it open.
An alternate staff-approved location.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, happy Mardi Gras. At this time, we'll take any citizen input. Do we have anything tonight, Kelly? No. All right, council business, mid-year budget review. There you are. I'm losing my mind, sorry.
First, I'd like to apologize to Councilmember Parlet for not having a PowerPoint presentation. Hopefully in the future, I'll have a little bit, you know, more time to work with a count like that. So the mid-year budget, in addition to management's, you know, responsibility, fiscal responsibility of monitoring the budget, we also get together and, you know, look, look a little bit deeper at the budget at mid-year, and we've come up with various adjustments that we're bringing to council for approval. A couple of highlights from Budget Schedule A in the staff report. The delinquent TOT collections, that's $100,000 of additional revenue that we had collected, mostly collected and are expecting to continue to collect due to some audits that were performed by Robertson and Associates to kind of get some of the hotels back, back in order, paying their TOT. The interest in principal payment on a pass truck was not a budgeted item, but it, the council had approved the purchase of this pass truck last year, and the payment was deferred. The interim, the interim finance director cut the check a little bit earlier than it was due, so it's, it hit this fiscal year instead of hitting next fiscal year, where it was expected to be budgeted out of. And then the $90,612 in the BSCC law enforcement. We had about $145,000 worth of cash sitting in that account with, with the original budget only having about $20,000 worth of expenditures budgets to come out of there, 15 for a pass-through amount to the City Clearlink as we administer the funds for them as well, and then I think just $5,000 for projects out of that fund. The chief and the lieutenant went through that account and are using... The deal was to basically split the proceeds with the City Clearlink minus the original $50,000 that we had, that were earmarked for us. And so that ended up being about $62,000. So that's part of the $90,000 increase, and the remainder of that increase is for various projects that the money's being used on at the new PD. The Budget Schedule B is basically just a summary of the appropriations column from Schedule A, just showing which departments these requested appropriation adjustments would be, would be hitting. So in total, this increases across funds, the total appropriation of about $70,720.
Any questions?
Anyone? Anyone from the public? All right, Linda, it's just not even fair. Okay, there's no questions. We'll entertain a motion. Madam May, go ahead.
Ladies first.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the fiscal year 2016-17 city budget as recommended by staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Nick. We like to get more money. Let's see, item B, our urgency item.
Madam Mayor, Kelly's the first woman.
Who wants to talk about it?
Who wants to take it? Let me take it.
Yes.
Okay, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We actually started doing emergency measures at the beginning of February with the declaration. We didn't realize how bad the storm was going to get at that time, so we did the emergency declaration on the 14th, as things were starting to really pick up. And so the measure, the declaration extends back up to 10 days before the declaration for any, if the, if the governor does approve this as an emergency statewide measure, I mean, emergency measure. The funding, it would allow us anything that was spent out February 4th up to, up to now. So we've had quite a few expenses at this time between the fencing we had to put up at Library Park, the, oh my gosh, we've had so many, so many big ones. The new K rails we had to put up at the, to keep the water out of the park and the wave damage that was created at the park. The sewer pump trucks we've been pumping out up around C Street and First Street. The, then yesterday, we had to declare, as you all know, we had to declare an emergency to move people, evacuation notices at four of the mobile home parks, three mobile home parks, and one street of, and Esplanade. So it's, it's become a major storm for us, and the public staff that is here working 24 hours around the clock, keeping the community safe and working on some projects. So I'm asking for council to ratify the declaration from February 14th on this storm of calling it a flood event in 2017.
Did you want us to read the proclamation?
No. You don't need to.
The proclamation is just, the Director of Emergency Services, the city manager, to declare an emergency when the council's not in session. And so what state law then requires is that within seven days of that proclamation, the city council ratify it, declare a continuing emergency with that. We can request, we can notify the governor and request that...
Have we got a question?
Emergency...
Yeah, assist us with additional resources that we need for this storm and help recover some of our expenses.
My question is, as you said up to this point, is there a point to where we can say we no longer are in an emergency situation? If the governor says that we can have the money type thing to help for this, I mean, is there a point that we cut this off?
We have to ratify this every 14 days. So we would bring a recommendation to council that, you know, we think that the expenses and any actions that need to be done for the storm are done, and, you know, we're, which I don't see it being done in 14, in the next 14 days. But anyway, you do have an opportunity at any time to look at this and say, yeah, you know, we believe that the storm is over and won't be any additional.
Okay, so if, let's say 14 days from this ratification, it's still going on, do we have to have an emergency meeting to do that? Since our, will it just be the next council?
We could do it at the council meeting. Because it's, I guess unless we had a, a month, let's see. I think we were just every two weeks. That's what I, sometimes we have a three-week break. Then we have to do something in between that, yeah.
But February is a short month.
Yes.
Does that include, like, remedial, you know, damage repair after everything is done? So that you have an emergency going on and on and on, and then when the waters recede and it's like, you know, six weeks or eight weeks, that still continues during that period? You don't like cut it off and then say, well, we got to fix this stuff after the, you know?
Right, it's not going to be cut off too early, yeah. Because, yeah, we don't really know how bad the damage is going to be till the water recedes. We do know there's, we definitely know there's going to be some major damage in Library Park already. And then we've had a lot of costs with the, with the sewer stations. That's been, but, you know, been an emergency to get that down.
Yeah, I think on the same page as Kenny is, like repairs that need to be done after the water recedes, like maybe, you know, drywall on a building or something like that, would that still be under the emergency situation?
Yeah, anything that's covered by this, anything that's caused by the storm should be, we should be able to claim that under the, under the flood event.
Just a little more information on that. So what it, what happens is if the governor does declare a statewide emergency for all these counties or areas, and, and then along with our proclamation, we would apply to CalOES for those funds. So if we had a, let's say you had a big damage area and that's approved, then that's going to be approved for the long term that it takes to repair that.
Right.
That, that's the idea that it would, it would cover that whole project. And some of those projects, it could take a year. I mean, you just don't know, depending on what kind of damage you had.
But the emergency itself doesn't last a year. Emergency only lasts as long as conditions warrant, but you, the funding is there.
Would continue on if it's eventually approved, yes.
And I'm assuming that people that live in, say, something that's flooded, once it's declared emergency, could probably contact the state and get special funds.
They don't, it doesn't cover private property.
Yeah.
This is only for public infrastructure and public overtime costs.
They have to turn to their flood insurance.
It would be their insurance or potentially something, you know, FEMA had a program or something. But these kinds of disasters, this is for public infrastructure and public costs to respond, but not, not to repair private property.
So chief, what's the regular and customary reimbursement? Is it like a percentage?
Up to about 90% if you have the maps on that.
Because, I mean, there's a lot of people doing a lot of stuff, and it could be crippling to a, you know, small budget like ours, so.
Absolutely, and, and I've been into both, Assemblywoman Cecilia Aguirre Curry and Senator McGuire have both contacted us to see what we needed. And I will be sending them a copy of the resolution, and they will try to carry that message to the governor also of our needs here.
Of course, I mean, this includes putting in for all of our overtime costs. You've got staff out there working many, many hours of overtime and significant, you know, time to operate. So those are stuff that we're trying to cover in conjunction with this.
Any other questions? Public?
Actually, yes.
Want to, Doug?
Thanks. Can you speak to the extent of the damages currently known and anticipated, particularly in the area of Library Park and the seawall?
I think we're going to, maybe in communications, kind of get an update of everything. Do you want to do it now, or? Okay.
It's up to you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, we can go ahead and get...
I can, let Doug speak a little bit to Library Park. I mean, they've been monitoring that, working hard on that since January.
I hear the bus coming. Well, the first thing that we noticed as far as Library Park goes was before we actually installed the Aqua dams, was that we had some kind of a failure with the, with the wall itself on the southern portion from where the pier runs out down to First Street. And how we knew that we were having a failure there was that the expansion cracks, that's where, you know, when you pour concrete, you don't pour it all solid every eight feet or so. You have to put a check in it. So that's called the expansion joint. We had, as the waves were coming in, we had water blowing up out through the expansion joints in the sidewalk. So what that tells us is that there was a failure with the seawall of some type. We couldn't tell because it's underwater, that washed out all the material that's underneath the sidewalk. And so it's created a cavity under the sidewalk, which then allows the waves to come in, and then that's, when they hit the back of it, that's how they come and come up through the expansion cracks. So we know we have that for sure. The extent of that, we have no idea until we remove the sidewalk, because you can't see it. We are seeing some erosion behind the sidewalk on the very southern side. As a matter of fact, we have a tree we're probably going to lose where the waters actually came in and washed around the root structure of a tree on the south end. Now, that area is all fenced in. And that was one of the reasons we put the fence up was to keep the public from being able to get out in that area. Other damages that I know of, right off the top, are crank-up docks at Third Street. The waves were coming in so hard that it actually started lifting the flooring off of the docks and was actually peeling it apart. That's why we've noticed now the end of it is disconnected and lifted up. Unfortunately, the waves were so big, we weren't able to do that during the event. So we stacked concrete blocks on it to try to keep the, you know, the decking down. As soon as, on Saturday, when the, when the waves laid down, then we removed the blocks, and we unpinned it, and we've got it lifted as high as we can. Unfortunately, due to the way that it's constructed, that's as high as we can get it. We can't take it up like a drawbridge. So at the same time, we also noticed that there were other parts of, of the docks that were also starting to lift up. So what the total damage is going to be on that, again, we're not going to know until the water goes down. We can really get a chance to get it underneath and look at the docks from the bottom and see how they're coming untinned. So we know we have that coming up. Our crank-ups down in front of Yacht Club are as high as they can go. So, you know, we're anticipating some possible damage on those. Right now, we own the yacht club, even though we have leased to the yacht club. They're sandbagging the doors because we have water that's starting to encroach into the building. So we could have some possible damage with it in the yacht club itself. And the reason that we put up the water wall, that's the big orange thing that got knocked over with the waves on Friday. The reason for that is, is simple. It's not really to hold the water back, but it's to break the wave action. Because as the waves break on the sidewalk and they come shooting up, it's like being at the beach. Well, that water will actually de-sod the park. We saw that back in 2006, where the waves actually start cutting underneath the sod, and then it just lifts the sod up. So in order to try to save our sod, which is very expensive to replace, we've installed those water walls. During the Friday event, we've had some 3,500-pound, eight-foot-long park benches that were knocked over and shoved about eight feet up into the picnic tables along the lakefront. They're underwater. We're not sure really what the damage on those are going to be until the water goes down and we can go in there and, and assess, you know, what's going on with that. All of the decomposed granite that was in that picnic area to the north of the pier is all on the lawn now. So we've lost pretty much all of our decomposed granite, including that going up the center promenade. When the wall went over, we had a breach there, and it pretty much took all the DG out. So that's just a real brief, rough summary. I'm sure we're going to find other things. One thing that I'm pretty sure is going to happen is all of our ADA park and our playground areas is going to go away. It's already floating out.
Yeah.
So, so right now, I would say probably a rough, just a rough ballpark estimate with no basis. This is just Doug kind of looking at things and grabbing a number. I'd say we're between $200,000 and $250,000 of sustained damage at this point in time.
That's just the Library Park?
That's just the Library Park.
Kevin, did you want to add something else?
No, I think Doug covered most anything unless you have any questions outside of Library Park.
And we've had, you've gotten the Nixal on the street closures. We added one tonight on Royal Avenue. We're, we're monitoring Lake Shore Boulevard right now.
Do you want to talk about that now or?
Yeah, sure. So with regard to the Royal Avenue, that's been put out and I noticed that the transportation manager just got the word of that. I saw that online. And I personally called Erin Hagberg right before the council meeting to let her know that Public Works expects to probably close after the morning bus run, that section of Lake Shore between Peach Lane and Lang Street that we've been trying to keep open, you know, all week, even though we've had concerns over there. We've just been putting out safety notices and letting people know to drive safe, but trying to leave it open for the public. Unfortunately, we may have to actually close it tomorrow. So we gave the school that information tonight so that they can try to make some arrangements for their afternoon bus run tomorrow. And hopefully, you know, we'll be able to work something out, they'll be able to work something out. But, but mainly just for public safety, traffic safety, we want to make sure it's safe for the public. So that's why we close these streets.
We had about 40 evacuees from Lakeport that are, were using the shelter today at Seventh Day Adventist Church. So I miss them now.
They're expecting that same number from the city tonight.
Yeah. So it's been, and we've had a 24-hour phone line with someone to answer the phone for it on the, the number that we published, 263-5614, that anyone can, has any questions can contact us or they have, you know, otherly friends or relatives in the area that we can check on if they're, you know, worried about someone that's in the evacuation area.
They're controlling the parks that are evacuated?
Yes, and, you know, I'm, I think, hopefully, all the council members got the Nixal on that. But the big thing with, you know, we gave these evacuation orders, so we're going to make all possible efforts to, to protect those people's property that have been, that have left. We do understand they have concerns when they leave and it's disaster area sometimes, you know, people tend to take advantage of that and try to go in and break in and steal stuff. So, you know, I've got officers on overtime today and tonight just, just to watch those areas as much as we can. And, you know, we've put out the notice to the public that we will arrest people going into these areas that have no business in these areas. If they're not, somebody that lives in there and they're going in there, we'll arrest them for entering a disaster area. The city's declared it a disaster area, which then gives me the authority under Section 409.5C of the penal code to arrest people for entering these areas. So I want to encourage those kind of folks to stay out of there. We're going to do everything we possibly can to patrol those areas and try to protect people's properties. So, you know, hopefully, you know, we'll continue to do that as long as we need to do and hopefully, you know, we can start getting people back in some of these areas at some point, so.
We have our next meeting at probably at 8:30 tomorrow morning, so we'll be probably setting out a new alert, Nixal and what the status is after that point, see what happens tonight, see where the lake is. And we'll be continuing monitoring it and getting information out as quickly as we can to the public as we, as things are happening.
Any other questions?
One question. There at the yacht club, they have the RV dump station. I'm assuming that's underwater?
That's capped.
That's capped? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I was just kind of wondering.
Yeah, staff has been checking out all the possible sites where there could be some, you know, influence of water coming in and that, because it's pretty low stress in our reservoir if we had, if having stormwater coming into our system.
I know that Doug was meeting with the people from the state and you were heading down to one of the distressed areas and making sure that everybody either had them watertight or capped off. How did that go?
We've been through all of the RV parks about three times now, just making sure. Especially we see a rise coming from a pump station that we know is being, you know, is servicing a mobile oil park. So we're being very proactive on that. That's why we're pumping around Willow Point. We had, we had to isolate Willow Point because we were getting so much inflow in there that wasn't sewer, it was stormwater, that was overwhelming the Third Street pump station or C Street pump station. That's why we had to have all the pumper trucks running to keep that from overflowing. So in order to, to cut that, we had to plug both sides of the main on each side of Willow Point to keep from being inundated from the Willow Point area. So that's what the big pump is. That's why we're pumping, you know, all the way up to Main Street and then it's going on down, was so that we could isolate Willow Point, which has been done.
And because that, the dilapidation and the age of that whole facility there, just capping it doesn't mean you're not going to have a tremendous amount of IONI all throughout that entire area there, it's probably.
Right. And Willow Point has been notified and has been cognizant of all their issues there with, with IONI. When we camered that section this year, we could get the camera partially up there, one of their laterals, and within the first 50 feet, we could already see it caved in with actual rocks and dirt in the sewer lateral. And so that's going to be something that, when this crisis is over, this, it's going to have to be addressed on what do we got to do with that? Because every time we have a flooded bit like this, we have this exact same problem and nothing ever gets fixed. And this is where we had the last flood. That's where all of our issues came from. That's why we refilled our reservoir. That's why, you know, it cost the city millions of dollars. And I, and I think it's, we need to figure out something.
The thing that's amazing and we're so lucky for is Doug and Tom and Paul, they know all these systems like the back of their hand. And so they've been like two steps ahead of it the whole way and getting in front of it and working constantly. And Kevin is our public information officer, totally cool and calm all the time, taking all kinds of phone calls. They're all working all night long, while Margaret stayed on the phone until four in the morning. Hillary was here, was it Hillary or Andrew was here late?
Chief was here.
Chief was here. And who else? What else is going on? Always a pleasure, though. They're all, you know, chief had extra crew, Doug had extra crew. They're all friendly and nice and calm and taking care of people. And Red Cross showed up right away when we called them. So we were able to evacuate and have somewhere for them to go right away. We're getting good at this. It's too bad.
The mayor was in there helping us on that day.
I put my rain boots on and got out there. It was interesting.
Yeah, she did a great job helping evacuate some residents. We appreciate it.
So, all right, we have a resolution to ratify. There's no other questions? Kelly, do you have a suggested motion for us?
If somebody just wants to move to adopt and then read the, the title of the motion, that'll be your call. Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to adopt, adopt the resolution ratifying the disaster council's proclamation of a local emergency in the city of Lakeport and requesting the governor to proclaim a state of emergency for the city of Lakeport.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, everyone. All right, Council of Communications. Who wants to start? Kevin, our public information officer?
Sure. Yeah, no, I'd just add on to, you know, it's, the staff has been very active there. But I also want to just compliment the citizens of Lakeport, too. Everybody's been very cooperative that we've worked with, folks on the phone, calling in our AOC, you know, folks that were working out in the field. Everybody's been really cooperative in, in listening to orders and, and providing us with information. And police and Public Works have been able to follow up on those. That was kind of, what kind of led to our taking a look at Royal Avenue today was started with neighbors calling in and addressing their concerns. So just hope that that continues and at this point, we'll continue to staff that AOC and make sure that information is getting out into the proper places.
Thanks, Kevin. Whose mic is fuzzy?
I can't pick it out.
I can't.
Watch your, Michael.
No, I am not.
I know Planning Commission, I always.
It might be. Yours was bent clear down when I came in. It might be.
Busted.
Look at that.
No, it wasn't him, it was whoever sat there.
Before. Must be that Planning Commission.
That's got to be that pesky Planning Commission.
Margaret?
I sort of echo what Kevin said. Being out there yesterday with the public and the people that are calling in, I really want to thank them for all the cooperation and the assistance that they do for us. So it's been, been very thankful that everyone has been really, you know, the community's been really responsive to all the requests. So and we're going to just try to keep the information flowing as much as we can when we can. So that's about it. I wanted to thank staff that has put in all this time.
David?
Anything to report?
Doug, anything else?
I think the only other thing I, that I would like to say is, is because of everything else that's going on with the pump stations in Library Park, we did try to get out today and patch Sayer and Green and the guys on the area for the schools. But I just don't have enough staff to, to really be doing a lot of patching right now. As soon as, I'm hoping within the next day or so, things are going to kind of calm down here and then we can focus on that. So if, you know, if you, we're trying to, we're explaining to people that are calling in with pothole complaints that, you know, we're logging them all and then we'll get to them as just as absolutely as soon as we can. But you guys might be getting a few calls if you could just tell them, you know, staff is going to be working on that just as soon as possible. And, and hopefully, within the next couple of days, we can start patching. Let you know that.
Thank you. Chief?
I was just going to add in addition to the, the road closure around the school for the last couple of weeks, because it's been close to that since we had part of Lake Shore closed. We've been trying to have our SRO and our day shift patrol working traffic all around the schools each morning and afternoon. So far, that seems like that's, that's helping, you know, keep the traffic flowing over there. So I just wanted to mention that. We'll, we'll continue to, to do that as much as we can until we get through this and get the roads back open and everything.
Thank you. Nick?
Nothing to report.
Kelly?
I think you're important.
Councilor, sir?
Well, I think it's a great job you guys are doing, being proactive and taking public safety as a priority. And I think you guys are doing a great job and all your staff has been a great job with this disaster. And keep it up.
Councilmember President?
I agree with George and nothing to report.
Councilmember Barnes?
I agree with Kenny and George. But I do have stuff to report because I actually made it to the Fire Protection District this month. A couple minutes late, but I was there because my alarm went off. I think the only thing really to report from that is they're selling an engine to Oregon. So I've been in and out of the evacuation center. And I just wanted to, to really put it out there, what a great job those guys over there are doing, too. You know, it's basically the warming center that we had for the homeless population here in Lake County who has stepped up and, and pretty much completely staffed now the evacuation center. So those volunteers that are on at night are now staying long into the day, they're coming in early, they're taking short bits of rest and they're making sure that the evacuation center now is up and running 24 hours instead of it just being an overnight thing. So, yeah, the last report I got from them when I was there before the meeting tonight was we had 60 people housed and that was before the bus run came from Lakeport. And families are starting to show up, five and seven at a time. We're going to be reaching capacity there very quickly. The capacity for the Seventh Day Adventist Shelter is 100 people. So we were at 60 before the bus came and before everybody got off work. So.
They just put it out for Soda Bay, for the Bay and Land's End, too.
And also.
Yeah, I agree. I was out there last night and it's really, really thankful for the work they're doing there. It's amazing with the volunteers and how they're making everyone comfortable there.
Yeah.
We might need to talk to the county about a second location.
From what I, from what I gleaned tonight from conversations I had with the Red Cross representatives, they were waiting for it to be deemed a state emergency before they could open up the armory and have that as a secondary place. So now that we've ratified this tonight, you know, there's a state of emergency ratified or a city emergency ratified, hopefully that'll get the attention and need staff to make the armory. I know the county is going to ratify next week because they canceled their meeting tonight. So they're, they're looking to ratify their resolution next week. So that's where they're at with that. Some of the issues they're running into is getting some more day staff. And I don't know if we could put this out anywhere, put a call out from the city to help staff the evacuation center. They need more day staff. The, the one thing they're in really desperate need of is an interpreter. They have a lot of Spanish-speaking families coming in there and they don't have a lot of interpreters.
We could definitely share that on our Facebook page with, with being needed there.
I think we can get that out.
Yeah, yeah.
We can kind of touch base with you after the council meeting real quick.
Absolutely. Absolutely. They also have some hookups for RVs, you know, people have RVs. So, I mean, they're, they're getting people fed, they're keeping them out of the rain, they're.
They're taking their pets. I mean, it's amazing.
Taking their pets. We've got pets in there. I mean, they're, they, I really commend them from switching gears from being allowed 24 people at a time to house in the 60 before the rush comes. You know, so that turned out to be very advantageous, advantageous in this circumstance. So, and, yeah, the, the job that the staff is doing is just wonderful. I see you guys everywhere and you're on top of it and it's great. It's really good to see everybody really digging in. So that's all I have.
Councilmember Turner?
I just commend the city staff. I stand with the rest of the council in my admiration and appreciation for how you have stepped up in this emergency. And I have nothing additional to report.
Agreed. Thanks, everyone, for all the hard work and be careful out there. Meeting adjourned.